I just want to introduce myself. My name is Karen Wilkerback and I am the Chair of 2022 Candidates Forum. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to welcome you to this Candidates Forum, which is sponsored by the Empority to the Good Commerce and facilitated by the League of Women Voters of San Diego. A lot of us have been put on in events such as this, and I would like to thank Superintendent Jose Esponosa in the South Bay County School District for allowing us to use this field to facilitate an access study. Hi, Elise here tonight. She is. I don't know that I want to... Well, hi Carol. Welcome.
I'm President of the Union District.
Excellent. Thank you. I'd like to thank Barla UDRS, Administrative Secretary of Business Services for all her valuable input and help. The League of Women Voters were facilitating this Candidates Forum and their volunteers, which is Moderator Carol Long, right over here, Coordinator and Timekeeper is Michelle Morgan, Question Screeners are Stephanie Sontag and Anna Wolf, and then the Auditor is Chris Shaver. That guy. So our volunteers that you see here tonight from the Board of Directors, the new COVID Chamber of Commerce Valeria Chavez, our President, Nellie Gaze, our Secretary, myself, Lisa Trever, Martin Mattis, and one of our newest members, Sandy. And of course, you, our community, for being here tonight to make an informed decision for the future of our city. City can aid to its fair amount by helping democracy, and this is a very important time in our community. I have met most of the candidates, and whether they have been here forever, have left and returned, or recently joined our beautiful city, I know you have passion and vision for the future of the city. So that finishes my short opening speech, and I'm going to turn it over to Aunt Carol.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here. I'm Carol Long, I'm the moderator tonight for the League of Women Voters of San Diego. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920, just six months before the 19th Amendment to the US Constitution was ratified, given the right to vote. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, either supporting or opposing candidates of political parties, but always working on vital issues of concern to members of the public. The League hosted many of the presidential debates until 1985, and currently to moderate candidate forums such as the one tonight. We are using the League format, which means that each candidate will have two minutes opening statement and two minutes closing statements, and they'll have one minute to answer each question. Questions I did submit in by many of you, and I don't know if there's more paper in the back.
Yes.
There is, if you think of additional questions. Question screeners are up here, and so people will bring the questions up here for the screeners. We screen the questions for duplication and appropriateness. We ask the all questions. We ask all the candidates, not singling out one person. And we ask you to use civility and respect and bring in your questions, keep them succinct, and there are going to be no verbal questions from the floor. Let's see. So tonight, we have candidates for District 1, District 3, and candidates for the Mayor. They have chosen to all be here together and answer the same questions that happened this afternoon. So we ask that they not stand to answer their questions. So I'm going to introduce them to you. Jen Crumley and Carol Seaberry are running for District 1. And Mitch McKay and Anna Webb are running for District 3, and Paloma Aguirre, Jeff Fisher, and Shirley Nakalaw, who is running for Mayor. My man's block is not correct yet, so he will not be part of this. So with that, the candidates have chosen numbers to start their opening statements, and we're going to start with Anna Webb.
Yes, I picked number one. So here I go. Thank you to the League of Women Voters in the IV Chamber for setting up this venue. We appreciate you. And I'm Anna Webb, I'm running for City Council, District 3. I'm a small business owner and a resident for nine years here in Imperial Beach in District 3. I worked on the Mayor's Task Force, helping businesses get their funding during the shutdown, federal, state, and local funds, to keep them afloat. I am a community service person. I served on the Board for the IB Neighborhood Center from 2018 to 2019, helping them start up their organization, and I'm now on the executive team of the Friends of IB Neighborhood Center, and helping them create awareness in the community for their expansion, for 50 affordable units for seniors. I am an environmental advocate. Obviously, the elephant in the room is the cross-border pollution, and now that we have funding to mitigate that, it needs to be overseen fiscally, responsibly, and also efficiently. I also believe in the safety and security of Imperial Beach. I used to be a network security specialist. I'm going to work with Citi to work with our networks and make sure we're protected against hackers, but I also am supporting our first responders, because it's so important that we remain the safest beach city in San Diego County. Again, I'm Anna Webb, I'm running for Imperial Beach, City Council, District 3, and I look forward to your support.
Thank you.
They'll move a lot faster if we don't applaud after each answer, so you can just hold it to the end, we appreciate that. Can everybody hear?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so Mitch is next.
Thank you very much. I want to, oh, protocol. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, as well as the Chamber and South Bay County School District for hosting this very important civic event. I appreciate everyone who gave up their time, their evening to come out, and whoever that is. My name is Mitch McKay, I'm running for District 3, City Council. I've lived in the South Bay since 1964. I was a Navy Beret, came to Nestor with my parents. My dad was stationed at Ream Field, and so my life began here in the South Bay. I attended Marvista High School right next door in the '70s, got married, moved to IB in 1985, became a first-time homeowner in 1990. Believe it or not, this could surprise a lot of people, I only paid $130,000 for my first house, four blocks from the beach. Yeah. So my involvement, civic involvement, over the decades is multifaceted. I've been involved in IB Little League Board, I've been part of the Paint IB Kiwanis Movement, I served on the Design Review Board for the City of Imperial Beach under Diane Rose, and I've been very involved in the last four or five years with the Tijuana River Valley and the cross-boundary sewage issue. I'm involved in that, that I'm on the Board, Citizens Forum Board for the IBWC. I also helped cofound a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that we directly interfaced with the EPA and also with the IBWC to work on a more comprehensive plan that includes wastewater reclamation, and I'm looking forward to your vote for District 3. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. I'm Carol.
Good evening. I want to thank all the entities that put this on together for us tonight. My name is Carol Seaberry, and I'm your neighbor. I'm running for the City Council position in District 1. I'm a native. I was born in Baboa Hospital. I love Imperial Beach, there's no place I'd rather be. In school here, in the '60s and '70s, I was known as Carol Moss, riding my horse every day after school on the bay and sometimes across town. My late, wonderful husband, God rest his soul, was a Navy SEAL, and my father was 22 years in the Navy. That brought us here. In my early years of work-life, I was in the service industry, and ever since then, volunteer work, taking up the slack wherever it was needed in various community activities. I am currently active with the Sheriff's Senior Volunteer Patrol. Every week, driving through every street, alley, going by every single school, shopping centers, and seeing the needs of our city and residents. I've seen many changes in Imperial Beach, and Imperial Beach is going to continue to grow. Managed growth is good as long as it puts us residents first and our local businesses first, and not the outside interest. Running for City Council is a chance to service IB in another way. Public safety is number one with adequate deputies, firemen, paramedics, and lifeguards. Managed growth equals a well-maintained infrastructure for all of our neighborhoods, which gives us a quality of life. I want to help local businesses thrive and welcome new businesses in here. They give us choices, jobs, generate revenue to help us maintain our city. I have no higher political aspirations than to service Imperial Beach. I am a local resident, and I want to stay local and make Imperial Beach a great place to live, a safe place to live, with a healthy environment for us all in the place that we call home.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League and the Chamber for hosting the event. My name is Paloma Aguirre, and I'm running to be the people of IB's next mayor. I first came to IB in 2001 for its waves, but I stayed for its people. For years, I surfed polluted water without knowing it. I got sick and tired of always having beach closures, so for the last 17 years, I've dedicated my life to fixing the sewage issue here in Imperial Beach. I have a Master's in Marine Biodiversity and Conservation from Strips Institution of Oceanography. I spent a year in DC working for US Senator Cory Booker, and I serve on the Board of Directors of SandAg, MTS, and I am Speaker Rendon's appointee at the Coastal Commission. Serving as IB's Council Member-at-Large, representing all 27,000 of its residents, has been the greatest honor of my life. During COVID, we came together as a community and worked to help those who needed it most. Through my leadership on the COVID Task Force, we helped feed over 1,000 families in need. We helped pass several moratoriums to keep people housed and help small businesses as well. I want to build on the momentum we've made in IB to address IB's existential threats, such as protecting the funding that we secured for sewage, prioritizing public safety, addressing the housing crisis, and helping small businesses. I think beyond my education, my experience, and my demonstrated leadership on council, my deep love for this community and my understanding of its diverse voices is what makes me the best candidate for its mayor. I know what it is to come from nothing. I arrived in IB 2001 with $500 to my name and big dreams to becoming a professional surfer. I know what it is to live paycheck to paycheck, and I know our residents are struggling to put food on the table and keep a roof over their head. So I understand from first-lived experiences what it is, and I want to make sure that I always continue to make those decisions as council member, and I want to make sure that I continue to make those decisions as native. Thank you.
Thank you, Paloma. Cheryl.
I'm Shirley Knockaway of All Asay, and I'm really excited to be here. After being born in Japan, my staff was stationed out here in Lujue, California, and in Imperial Beach when I was just three years old. I grew up here, I built my business here, I raised my family here. I've seen what it takes to make our community so special. I lived my entire life serving Imperial Beach through the Girl Scouts, the Boys and Girls Club, Kiwanis, the San Diego Regional Center, and of course, the Sun and Sea Festival. It's time for a change. I'm wanting to lead us into the new era. We can't use the same playbook. We need a new playbook. My number-one priority, both now and as our future mayor, is to improve the lives of my Imperial Beach neighbors. It's time that we demand that local politics focus on local interests. It's time that we ensure that the safety of our children, as they walk to and from school. I'm proposing that we come up with a volunteer parent organization, a safety patrol, to help our kids. It's time that we finally address traffic and parking issues. It's time that we ask the Board to finish building the parking structure they promised us two decades ago at the beach. It's time that we bring our businesses back to Imperial Beach. We can explore ways our city can generate more revenue to maintain and improve our public services without hurting our kids. The hotel tax is a good example. And it's time that we elect a mayor who will actively seek input from all residents. Your ideas in combination with my hands-on experience in leadership and as a certified public accountant will make us unstoppable. We will have new ideas for old problems. That's why I'm excited to hear what is important to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jack.
I thought it was seventh. You lost the gun.
You're seven, but it wasn't a one.
Yeah. Good afternoon and evening, everybody. Glad to see an auditorium filled with people who are interested in what's happening in their community. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters. I'm just going to be real short in my comments. The reason why I am running for mayor, I want to offer an unbiased leadership to this community. We have suffered through many years of political biases in our community. It's time for somebody to represent every single one of you. My goal to run as mayor isn't because it's driven by ego, I have no desire to have a power grab, it's driven by servitude. I want to serve and continue to serve the residents of Imperial Beach. That is the most important thing. After all, it's all about community. Absolutely about community. One thing that I can tell you is, I served on the City Council, especially as the mayor could attend this year, there's just two things that help us get things done. Advocacy, which is to know what people in this city want, what they need, and then diplomacy, and that's how we get stuff done. It's not about five days, it's not about bitter, it's not about political ideology. This is about getting things done in our community. The things that I want to do, that I want to focus on, I want to focus on our seniors. Our seniors are a wonderful community. They have built us, they have sustained us through thick and thin. Our children, they're the next generation. We've got to put their interests first. We want to have great parks and recreations for them, we want them to have mental wellness, physical wellness, and the opportunity to go out and to learn and see how incredible Imperial Beach is. The last thing I really want to see is my big dream, I want to see the Palm Avenue corridor improved, that people know that when they hit the streets of Imperial Beach, they know they're in someplace special, because that's what we all know. Again, at the end of the day, it's all about community. Thank you.
And now is Jen.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Crumley. I'm running for Imperial Beach City Council, District 1. First off, I'm not a politician. I come from a military family. I lived in San Diego since 1989. I'm the other Calabunga, and it's a pillar of the IB community for several years. The teams that we employ come from Marvista High School, and together we serve our community by making the world a happier place with ice cream and coffee. I'm a mother of two daughters, College Advisory Board Member at Cal State San Marcos, I sit on the Board for Management Information Systems. I'm a CEO, I'm also a Regional Sales Director for a cybersecurity company. I'm a proven business leader, and I will execute and get these things forward for Beach. My core issues are veranda parks in D1. By building community programs and parks for recreations, our kids have a safe place to play, which brings me to safety. We need more street mining, and our crosswalks need to be more pedestrian-friendly. 70% of D1 renters, and with that, with more cars parked on the street. IB decided to drive it through the neighborhood. We need to make the crosswalks more pedestrian-friendly and the corners more paved. Also, the housing crisis effects, it's all still different in IB. Stay well-passed in 2020, limiting rent from going down with A-SPAN, like we're in polls for test cause ordinance. We need to tackle these loopholes to ensure that by creating a city ordinance so that we can hold bad-acting landlords accountable while protecting the good-acting homeowners and renters. We need to help IB residents stay and live in IB. D1 is a minority in 40, and minorities aren't represented in my district. I'm seeking your support to be that person for City Council. I'm Jen Crumley, running for Imperial Beach City Council, District 1. Thank you.
All right, so now we're ready to start with questions. We've got lots of them up here. But the first one is, we're going to start with Mitch. What experience do you have reviewing budgets and your approving contracts? Mitch, one minute.
Thank you for that question. I have tons of experience. I've spent 35 years in aerospace as a project manager and project engineer. I've managed budgets of $300 million, the same amount of money that's being now considered by the EPA for the Tijuana River Valley. I've overseen and managed major airline retrofit activity, both at our facilities around the world and as well as at the airlines. I spent several months in China managing some of our overhaul facilities there as well, so I have a lot of experience in managing the money and making sure the job gets done on time, and as you might imagine, aerospace, safety is paramount, so there's no cutting corners, so it's a very delicate balancing job, so thank you.
As a business leader, I manage budgets on a daily. I definitely look at statistics and talk to both sides, from everyone in my business, as well as, I have multiple businesses in IB, and so I always get data statistics to make the best decisions, and talk to my team, and to make informed decisions, and I also have advisors as well. Thank you.
Shirley.
So I previously owned an electronics manufacturing plant, and was directly associated with aerospace industry. We have a small budget of under $50 million, and I review the governmental contracts. I was just recently turned out as the Chair of the San Diego Regional Center. We had above $2,600 million, and now I review the contracts for all the various vendors, which was about $250 million. I review the budget for the San Diego Regional Center for the past 12 years, along with maintaining many of my clients' budgets and financial records.
Thank you. Paloma.
Thank you. My experience has been, obviously, on City Council over these last four years. We have been quite responsible and transparent in our budget processes. We were very responsible when we put a down payment on our unfunded liability, which caused a lot of our regional cities to have financial issues. We took proactive steps to prevent that from happening. That puts us in the black. We've maintained in the black our budget for these last four years. Now, that says my role as City Council, on my role in my day job. I oversee a $15 million program for the International Community Foundation, where I oversee special projects, government grants, philanthropic grants, and all of them, all of them in a successful way, where we have never had any findings in our audits ever. Thank you.
Anna.
Thank you for the question. I have, in my various roles on my resume, working with different jobs. I have managed million-dollar quotas in executive sales. I've managed budgets for startup healthcare equipment company. I've managed budgets for marketing company. I have always done P&Ls, and if anybody knows a P&L, it's not fun, but it's necessary. And this is where I roll. I look forward to getting to know the budget here in the city. I read and attended the City Council meetings to get familiar with it, but going forward, that might change. And I do know that we need to manage our budget efficiently and fiscally responsibly, and I intend to do that.
Thank you, Carol.
Well, I'm a mother and a widow, and so I had to manage my own home, my finances, my medical bills, remodeling of our house, and then my mother-in-law, she was a handicapped woman, and I had her conservatorship over her very complicated million-dollar estate, dealing with all of her issues and medical bills, and all of her remodeling to make her home completely handicapped-friendly. And I didn't grow up with much money here in town, but I like to get a lot of bang for my buck, and I will do that for you guys, too. Thank you.
And Jack.
Yeah, you know, working in the food and beverage sector for over 30 years, the budgets are quite important, food costs are important, so numbers is a big thing, but you know, coming and working in a city, being on the City Council, the city who has zero debt, who's balancing a new budget, who has an amazing financial team, that's a blessing to the City Council. Why? Because that allows us to do the things that the residents need to be done, and I'm not saying that the financials aren't important to residents, because it does give us the ability to do things, but the city staff are the professionals, they know how to navigate through this, and for their advice, their degrees, I'm thankful for, because again, it allows us as the City Council members to have oversight, to look at the numbers, to go through it, ask the right questions, but ultimately, it's what our city team does. Thank you.
Okay. Our next question is, what are your plans to deal with the unhoused community in Imperial Beach? Start with Shirley.
Thank you so much. So I recall, by our last count, we have 14 documented homeless individuals in the city of Imperial Beach, and it's sad. Ideally, we would have none. We have worked with agencies such as the Neighborhood House, and the United Methodist Church, who have been working real diligently to provide housing and resources to those homeless. I really think that we need to reach out to the county of San Diego and take advantage of more of the programs and resources that they have. I've been to the East County Transitional Center, and it's amazing. I wish everyone to be there and see what they've done. They created their own family, a group of over 100 people who work together and have created a new life for themselves. They're so clean and wonderful. It's a great concept. Maybe we could duplicate something together, you know, our brothers and our sisters off the streets.
Thank you, Carol.
Well, I'm sorry. The problem seems unsolvable. However, I don't believe that. I believe that we can bring various charities and local governments together to help these people. I think we can do better. A lot of these people have mental issues, and so that's the biggest problem of all, trying to get them to take their meds and to be able to deal in society, and if we could just get better resources to them, and them to places that offer these, I think that would help, but it's not a solvable problem that just one person can do, we have to do it as a community.
Thank you. Mitch.
Yeah, I think, as I recall, the city has recently hired a resource individual, I think his name is Mr. Rolfe, and his job description actually involves going out on the street daily and meeting with these people and trying to ascertain their needs, understand where they're at in their life, you know, whether they have addictions, whether they have family in the area, and I think that's a very good start. I would also agree with Carol that, you know, integrating some faith-based resources as well, I know IB Neighborhood Center is a very good place for a lot of that to happen, because they do interface a lot with these folks, and I think that's probably the answer, maybe a little bit more energy behind it. Thank you.
Paloma.
Thank you for that question, and in reference to Mr. McKay's specialist position, that was my initiative to create that position when I was first elected in 2019.
that was my initiative to create that position when I was first elected in twenty nineteen, I believe we created that position. And yes, Mr. Rolfe, along with our Parks and Rec Director and Ranger, do weekly visits with every single one of our unsheltered residents. They know them each by name. They've already placed two in permanent housing. We have, you know, one of the lowest homeless rates in the region, and I truly believe it's because of that. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't work with our regional partners. The county has resources to support our homeless individuals. They have mental health assistance programs. It's something that I've worked through our sheriff's contract as well to bring more resources through the PERT program for some of these homeless individuals. So we want to make sure that they get the compassionate need and services that they require and also so that we can have a higher quality of life here in Imperial Beach for all families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Thank you for the question. I did a ride-along with the sheriff's department last Monday, and I was so pleased to know that they have a, an unsheltered slash homeless program. I rode with Carlos. We stopped by and spoke to each homeless person. He knew where they sleep sometimes. He would check all the parks. We ran into Shannon, who's with the Parks and Recs program. And she had told him there was someone behind the senior center, next to the library. We drove over there. I served on the board, as I stated, at the Neighborhood Center from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen with their startup. And now, this next year, this is very important, they are expanding their center to incorporate satellite offices for services for the homeless. They also shower them on Saturday mornings and give supplies. Reach out and donate to them.
Thank you, Jen.
We really need to enhance our partnership with the county, the sheriff, and the community organizations to provide outreach services for our transients residents. A lot of them are along by Palm, and so they're kind of hiding, they're putting them in hotels. We definitely need to expand that. Thank you.
Okay. And finally, Jen?
Yeah, you know, the solution to homelessness is just as dynamic as what causes homelessness. In the past, before, maybe few, three, four years ago, you know, we had two choices for homeless. Do nothing or call the police. Either of those choices weren't where we wanted those people in our neighborhood to get, to get to where they need to be. And so I agree, we do need to continue to create our partnerships with our local municipalities. Two of us is working on a program that we're hoping to opt in with them. The VA has been an amazing partner, and we find that most of the unsheltered who go to the VA get housing much quicker. Their services are available to them. Also, the San Diego Rescue Commission is working to find one of those satellites places down here in the South Bay that we can refer people to. But again, you know, these are members of our community. We know them by name. They're not strangers. They're neighbors, friends, family. They have roots here in the city, just as we do, and we need to help them and find a way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, here's the next question. What is your opinion on the managed retreat strategy for Imperial Beach? Anna, start with Anna.
Thank you for that question. There's been a lot of confusion and disinformation regarding managed retreat. Some conspiracy theories have been, you know, circulating around. The bottom line is, climate change is real. It is man-made, and it is happening. And we're in a climate crisis, and sea levels are rising much faster than what scientists predicted. We need to make sure that we plan accordingly. Whatever that looks like, whether that's living shorelines, whether that means protecting our stormwater infrastructure, our water infrastructure. We're currently partnering with SDSU and UCSD to do a study on how saltwater intrusion into our system will degrade our pipelines. I mean, we have to prepare. We don't want these pipelines to be degraded to the point where we won't have drinking water or we'll have stormwater running around through our city. So we need to make sure that we plan accordingly and that we get that into our local coastal and general plan that is currently being developed and considered by the Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, you know, managed retreat is, again, like Colm mentioned, those things are misunderstood. I don't understand it fully, so I'm not gonna sit here and pretend like I'm an expert at it. But I think that part of it is, is using the resources that we have to get the experts in. Again, doing nothing isn't gonna be sufficient for us. But I want the solution to be driven by knowledge, by information, and not by fear. Far too often, we have driven this topic in by fear that we're gonna flood. You know what? I don't know. I can't tell. But again, I think that those who watch us, those who are the specialists, are gonna help guide us through as a city. We need to rely on those types of people to help us. So thank you.
Jen?
We need to adapt to the sea level rise. I attribute it to the bay. And so projections of flooding in the next hundred years shows that the sea level will rise by the day. And the city has been doing a lot of outreach programs and workshops to get the community on the vital residency path and move for options that they haven't adapted. And so we definitely need to think that or have that top of mind and think about greener and more energy efficient policies.
Thank you. Carol?
That's why we need residents that have been here sixty years that know the history and the dynamics of our geography here. The tides that they're talking about are like king tides that come twice a year. We get king tides twice a year. And over on the bay, the water did come up to the bicycle path, but that was on a king tide. I've ridden my horse for years around the bay. It's never flooded. And all these experts that come into town, that have all these credentials behind their name, they set up a very short investigation, but they're doing it from a desk. We that lived here and commuted here and worked here, we see what has gone on for sixty years. Doesn't our knowledge of our local history count for anything, even though we don't have credentials behind our names? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. One more question. Cheryl?
I went to one of those community outreachers where they had the proponents of managed retreat come out and, as Jen said, do scare tactics. They were talking about eminent domain and remove all the buildings on South Seacoast in a very, very short period of time, saying it was all gonna be underwater and be damage to the buildings, and the only solution was to bring it down. And I listened as our neighbors were talking, and they were talking about, well, what about this and what about that? They hadn't thought about it. They hadn't considered any other solution or treatment about what we could possibly be doing. The only answer they said was, you're gonna have to just take it and bring your buildings down. That's not how we should be thinking. Again, we shouldn't be just taking the dictation from someone who's just into research behind a desk. We need to find out what's really going on, probably get some other studies done to find out what the truth is. Thank you.
Thanks. Mitch?
Thank you for that question. First of all, I think we need more peer review of this data. I've looked over several reports, including the Rabel Seal of Rise Assessment, which was done back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. It became an official city document in twenty sixteen, and now has become the basis for much of the LCP rationale and narrative. I would like to see some more sort of peer interaction and discussion on the information that's currently going or proposed to go into the LCP, which is a living document, and we recognize that. But we want something that also takes into account seawalls. C-180, they put in a seawall. The end of Palm, we put in a seawall. So they're eliminating, by categorically eliminating certain hard structures, because they don't want, so thank you.
Thank you. And Anna?
Let's don't confuse managed retreat with eminent domain. It's two different things. Any of you that live here or live down by Seacoast know that in the last two years, we've had some violent storms, which they literally had to bring a mars mover or like a snow shuttle and shovel six inches of sand off of Seacoast Drive and up the side streets. We had a good two to three inches that stayed there for a good three months. The storms and storm surge are getting worse. We need to have an additional plan in place besides our climate plan change. We could do amendments, because our neighbors on the coast are going to get flooded and inundated, and we have to have a plan. Whatever that is, let's work together and figure it out.
Thank you. Alright, here's the next question. How do you plan to manage parking traffic and street safety in line of protected growth in the city? Start with Jen.
Sorry, that was a very long question. I'm not sure I can do in one minute.
One minute.
You know, traffic safety is a huge concern for all of us. Speeding has been at an all-time high. One of the things that I'd like to see us have is a little bit more enforcement from our sheriffs. I'd like actively work with them, with our contract, and see what we can do to get at least a patrol out here a little more often to remind people of what they should be doing. I also think that I'm working with our city government and our city leaders to create a Safe Streets Initiative, which is driven by a community right now. It's a long, lengthy process. I'd like to see that process get shortened so that people, the residents and certain communities, can have yards and can gather together to help solve problems. Parking, boy, I wish I had, I wish I had a crystal ball for that one. That's a tough one. I can't tell people, with the economy and the housing crisis, there's more people living in smaller houses altogether who have to commute to get to where they need to be for jobs and stuff like that. That's a huge problem citywide, and I don't know the answer to that, but I'd like to explore some options for us to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, once again, we do have a lot of parking issues. But the thing is, on the new Ninth Street, they wanna take it down to one lane, and they did a study on that. And the study was done in December of twenty twenty-one, when we were in total shutdown. And now, they want to take that information and take that Imperial Beach traffic down to one lane each, take out parking spaces. And so it's again, it's done by someone that doesn't live here, commute here, or take their kids to school here. And I just believe, if they keep on shutting down streets, of course, it's gonna be more speeding on the other side streets. And a possible solution for that would be not speed bumps, but speed humps. They slow down the traffic without stopping them, because the more you stop and go, the more pollution and wasting gas we're gonna have. So we need to get people in here that know our city, live and communicate.
Thank you. Anna?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Okay. How do you plan to manage parking traffic and street safety in line of projected growth in the city?
Absolutely. One of the biggest complaints I get from my neighbors down on Seacoast Drive, especially on the weekends, everybody's at the beach, they're having fun, and then they blow, they blow up all the side streets and speed up Ivy Boulevard. I feel that one thing we could do would be put a flashing crosswalk, we have a crosswalk at Second and Ivy Boulevard, but we could put a flashing crosswalk or possibly a stop sign there. I know we probably can't do speed bumps because of first responders coming to the beach. But I also believe on the side streets, we could put the speed bumps like we're in Jen's district, that, you know, could help slow down the traffic. In addition, I think we could actually look at adding a traffic policeman officer to our crew, because it needs to be managed and we need to stay safe.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. I think that we need to have a multi-pronged approach to parking and street safety. I've been knocking on hundreds of people's doors, talking to my neighbors. Cala is an issue. Thirteenth Street south of Palm is an issue with speeding. Florence Street is an issue. Georgia Street is an issue. I've talked to so many parents that every time they send their kids to school, are terrified that they'll get hit by a car. So we need to make sure that we create safe routes to school, whether that means bike routes, whether that means, you know, reducing the speed limits. It's something that we have already done on Seacoast Drive and on Ivy Boulevard. I on the dais requested that we do that all north of Palm. That hadn't even been considered. We need to make sure that we enforce traffic laws. We need more community service officers to monitor morning speeding and making sure that cars stop at the stop signs. And finally, we need more crosswalks around the block, completely. Thank you.
And Cheryl?
Hi. So one of the things that I had talked about before is the port of San Diego two decades ago promised a parking structure. That the parking lot at El Bulli and Seacoast was temporary. I would hold up to that. It's time that we've got to see some progress on that parking building. In addition, we've done multiple parking studies here in Imperial Beach. I would think that we would continue on with our traffic calming processes that we're going through, along with the roundabout, the speed humps, the slowing down on traffic, all that's good. And then again, the creation of a volunteer parents' public safety, safety patrol group that is led by our sheriff's department to assist in getting our kids safely to and from school. I know that I have witnessed three hit children being hit on Ivy Boulevard going to Imperial Beach charter. That's not acceptable. I would also look at having the experience of people who know about traffic calming to come and talk with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
We definitely have issues with parking in Imperial Beach, especially on holidays. And then so, one idea I think would just be to put a parking right somewhere so that it would actually make people come in and ride their bike and promote a more healthy lifestyle. Another option would be, you know, we have to maintain our contracts with the sheriff and deputy to promote safety as well. They definitely are under staff. Maybe probably another person, something to think about to add to the budget, as well as a, just maintaining the crosswalks as well and making them more pedestrian friendly.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you for that question. I recently participated in the Ninth Avenue Improvement Workshops. As a matter of fact, there was about three or four, and then I also attended the DRB meeting last week. I think there's some good progress and some good options being presented that will definitely help with the speeding. But unfortunately, I think human nature is human nature, and if we don't enforce those laws, it's, you know, people are gonna keep driving. Twenty-four percent of the people living in Imperial Beach are under eighteen years old. So you've got twenty-five percent of this population making decisions about how fast they're gonna drive or how safe they're gonna drive. And I just think we need, we need, you know, we need the sheriffs to enforce it.
Okay, thank you. Here's the next question. What's your vision for better public transit for Ivy residents? And start with Anna.
I have to say, coming from Ohio back in the day, that our public transportation here is heads above, but it can be improved. It needs to be improved. We have a trolley, we have a system, and we have buses, but it takes hours for people to go to work. And I believe it can be improved. I know that Sandag and the City of San Diego have a plan in place to improve the public transportation. And I think Imperial Beach needs to work in conjunction with them to see how we can streamline our residents who work up north that need public transportation, get to those, get to those services.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you for that question. Interesting fact, the average time of commute for a person in Imperial Beach to their job is twenty-eight minutes. I bet you can't get on a bus and get anywhere in twenty-eight minutes. I've watched the buses. I sat there and watched them. Most of them have less than five passengers. I just don't see them as being efficient. You've gotta pay for maintenance on the bus, the bus driver, you know, there's loads of overhead. I think we have to look at somehow shrinking down that transportation mode, make it more efficient. But right now, I think Ivy's got way more buses than they need, because they're never full. Thank you.
Hello?
Thank you. Well, I certainly don't like the approach to throw up my hands and give up. So I sit on MTS as the Board of Directors, and I advocate for youth opportunity passes. That's something that we've already approved for all young folks under eighteen. We're advocating to increase that age to twenty-four, because they're right at that age that they're starting their careers and they need to commute. I myself, I remember I was working two jobs here in Ivy and commuting all the way to USC. It took me two and a half hours. So obviously, people are not gonna use public transit if it's not competitive with the car times.
So something that I also advocated for, and we secured it, is increasing frequency in the 933 and 934 bus line. If we can make competitive commuting times with cars, people will use more of the public transit. And I also, I've also been advocating for increased shading at bus stops and amenities at the bus trolley station, more lighting at the trolley station as well, because I think for us women commuting at night, we feel unsafe. We want to make sure that all people riding the public transit feels safe. Thank you.
Jen?
I think today, maybe it's, we do have a public transit system today, but it's all the way in Palm for the trolley, and then we have our bus that goes through. It does take a long time to get to get to places. And maybe just, and I don't know if we can extend the trolley somewhere a little closer to Ivy, and if that's even possible, or maybe just come up with a, you know, the carpool lane, where we can just, you know, try to suggest a carpool to make it a less impact on the environment.
Okay. Jen?
Yeah, you know, I'll be honest with you. In a year and a half on the council, I've not heard one person complain about MAPS Transit in Imperial Beach. Most residents within a half mile of a transit station where they can catch the bus, go through a trolley. I think that we have to manage that expectation. If you're riding public transportation, there's probably a choice. I know that the next generation, I have, you know, kids who are of driving age, who choose to go on public transportation, and they manage that expectation. They get ready early, they leave earlier. For those of us who have had cars and been driving since we were 16, well, that expectation to get to the same place at the same time is not going to exist. So I think there's a culture shift, a thought process with people who are in the inner environments, that they make a conscious effort or a conscious decision to be on public transportation. Thank you.
Carol?
Well, I agree with Mitch that these big giant buses, double, they, buses are going through with three or four passengers on them. So if they're going to continue that, maybe make smaller ones going through the town, because it's wasting, again, resources and gas and adding more pollution by having these big empty buses coming through. I have a friend that takes the bus to work in Balboa Hospital. She has to leave almost two hours to get there. And for us, we live in Imperial Beach, and we're like, not in a city. Like, people moved here to be in the suburbs. And so, it's going to be a hard change for a lot of people, because when I go to Costco or the grocery store, you can only be able to buy a little bit instead of as much as you need to buy. And so, it's a tough question for us older people that are used to the convenience of own vehicle.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl?
I've probably done more years of bus riding and trolley riding than just about any one year of town. It's not efficient. It's a means to an end, but in our town, I can get around really well for a pretty cheap dollar. I'm all for thinking outside of the box, because it's not cost-efficient. If you have a big bus with a driver on it and the amount of fuel it takes to go and just haul three or four people, it's not efficient. What if we think outside the box? What if we took it and tried to privatize it a bit? What if we did something like Uber? Guess what? I think it would be cheaper. I looked at an analysis that Richard Bailey, Mayor of Coronado, did, and how much this costs us. And what if we did do a privatizing, where you need to get from point A to point B and you have a private driver take you? I'm guessing it would be more efficient. I've lived, or not lived, I've been in communities which have really, really great public transit, and I think ours is actually pretty good for our community. It's one of the external out of Imperial Beach that becomes problematic.
Thank you. All right, here's the next question. If elected, how do you plan to help businesses stay in Imperial Beach? Start with Jen.
I'm actually a business owner, and so I do promote to the economy here in Imperial Beach. Actually, I'm going to open up another one right next to Cowabunga, and it's going to be for healthy living. We just got approved by the board, so definitely want to stimulate my city and look for ways to invest, because I am a business owner, I'm a multiple business owner, and would love to invest in small businesses and help them and streamline it so that they can get through the process quicker. And I 100% support small businesses.
Thank you. Hannah?
Thank you. Absolutely. I'm all about business development here in Imperial Beach. I want to manage development responsibly to maintain the character here, but in regard to business development, I want us to continue to encourage people to bring their businesses here. We have many areas where they can come and create, and with my startup knowledge, you know, hopefully I'd be able to help steer them in the right direction. We absolutely need our business community, because that's what drives our economy.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Business, this is something I'm really passionate about. How would we get businesses in here? We can offer them incentives to develop a business in here. At South County Economic Development Council last week, I was talking with the executive director, Jim, about creating an education program here in Imperial Beach to bring businesses in here. But it's not just about bringing businesses in here. We need to remove the barriers to them doing business. What is the process that we have in order to get a business license? You go to and do a plan check here and the DRB Designer Board, and you don't have a planning commission anymore, but it could be months out and a huge amount of money before we're in a position for them to open their doors. Let's get them in here, and also let's make it, give them an incentive to stay there to remove the barriers. Thanks.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, I know a friend here that tried to open a business for three years, and they put her through so many hoops to open this business. And I think it should be, it should be even across the board and make it easier and make it friendlier for businesses to want to come here. They made it almost impossible for her, but she was a very stubborn girl and stayed with it and kept on working at it, working at it, and went through everything the city gave her. When we see other businesses, that they weren't even set up that they were able to fully open and start the business when it wasn't even complete, the building wasn't completely done. And so, I think we have to have a set set of rules that goes evenly across the board and not play favorites. I don't know what happened there, but I can see that it was all about money. I don't know if you had to pay certain services to get what you needed to get through. This almost took this girl out of, took her out of business. Of course, she didn't start it, so just make it more friendlier for all businesses to come in.
Thank you. Mitch?
Thank you for the question.
Paul?
No, no. I said, thank you for the question. I think, you know, there could be some streamlining and some processes within the city. I'm not all that familiar with what all this required. Obviously, certain businesses have much higher requirements, state requirements, environmental requirements, EPA, if you're within a thousand feet of the coast, you've got coastal commission to deal with. So not having looked at all this, I think, I would hope, we can go back in and look at streamlining some of the processes. Maybe some of them are somewhat duplicated or can be done in parallel. And, you know, so we can avoid long, lengthy, drawn-out processes where people give up and take their business and licenses. Thank you.
Carol?
Yeah, you know, small businesses are absolutely the heart of our community. You know, we're grateful to have the lovely men and women who operate the shops. We know them by name. We know their family. Some of them have been here for decades, since I was a small kid. What can we do to help businesses stay in Imperial Beach? I think number one would be to really support the Chamber. From the city to support the Chamber, to have that behind them is a huge thing. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the hard work of the Chamber. And so, doing that's great. I think we work together with the city. I've heard that it is hard to do business in Imperial Beach, but I've not had somebody come to me and say, hey, compared to Chula Vista, it takes me X number of days, X number of months longer to do business. So I think that kind of comparing it to what exists, I'd love to see where it works. And I can't imagine the city of San Diego being very easy to get a business open or get a business permit. One thing I would like to do for small businesses, take a look at our sign ordinance, which is outdated and antiquated, which doesn't allow a whole lot, and this frustrates many businesses. So, thank you.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question? Barrow, would you mind repeating the question?
If elected, how do you plan to help businesses stay in Imperial Beach?
Thank you for that question. Well, first and foremost, with COVID, we had a lot of local businesses that were affected, that despite us having COVID-19 relief funding and ARPA funding, weren't able to access that funding. I had a conversation the other day with Valerie Acevis, and she was telling me how much of a hardship for micro businesses that operate out of their homes were having in accessing this type of funding. We need to do a better job in coordinating with the county and some of those regional programs that we have, and also looking out for our local businesses. That's one. Two, Ivy is a jewel of the county, honestly, and there's a lot of interest that's coming into Imperial Beach. I think we need to take careful consideration of the types of businesses that are coming here so that they're compatible with our entity, our ethos, right? We are a small-town, family-friendly community. We don't want this turning into a PB or an OB. We need to make sure that we streamline our permitting process. I've had so many comments from developers or business owners that I've spoken to that say it's taking your project to San Diego is like taking it to the grave. So we need to streamline the process despite the fact that our amazing titleless director does a really good job. Thank you.
Okay. All right, the bell claps. All right. Here's the next question. What have you done to help, what about this trophy? What have you done to help push for solutions to the pollution issue at the border, and what have you done? And we're starting with Carol.
Well, whoops. Well, I've taken up a sign, been at the pier with Stop the Hoop signs, I've been at the sewer treatment plants with my Stop the Hoop signs. I'm just doing what I can with what I know at this time. I'm just, I'm just a neighbor, I'm just a mother and a housewife. And so, I hope the best plan to do is to recycle and reuse, and there's ways to implement that. But I just try my best. When there's a call to show up, I'm there.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you for that question. I mentioned that in my opening remarks. I've spent the last 17 years dedicated to fighting cross-border pollution. I've literally gone in two fights, not one, but two fights with Paja California governors for not stepping up to the plate and putting funding into Cuntavander. Through my years of advocacy, we've increased and improved our water quality testing. Now it is the strongest in the entire nation because of that advocacy. So we have absolute confidence that our beaches, when they're not polluted, are some of the safestest women. Now, I advocated, well, I supported the lawsuit, which was, everybody said, you're doing the wrong thing, and we proved everybody wrong, because of that lawsuit, we now have the $300 million available to invest in the sewage treatment plant expansion, which will take from 25 MTD to 65 MTD. Mexico, just a week and a half ago, committed $140 million to face Cuntavander finally. That is because of my years and years and years, not just mine, but this entire community's advocacy. And what we need to continue to do is advocate for Phase II funding, another $300 million. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, you know, the sewage again has been historical for us. It's been on for 40 decades. It's been at the forefront for the past few years. It's been unfortunate that our beaches have been closed so often. It's had an economic impact, it's had a social impact for us. You know, I think for us, the best thing that we can do as a city is support the EPA's plan. I know there are some people who are not a fan of it. The good thing is, though, the EPA has the money, and they have great people who work for them. We need to work with our elected officials, not only in Imperial Beach, but locally, meaning the state and Assembly and those other people. They need to fight for us. They hit the lacks. They've been really good about taking pictures to take credit for stuff, but they need to continue to help push and push and push. What we need to do as a community is come together and to advocate together. Don't expect the five people who are on the city council to do the work, but to get together, to write emails, to petition, to do everything, to be that loud voice that we need to be, to gather together as a community. And to be honest, you know, even though the sewage is a big thing, there's other issues in our community that also need to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mitch?
Thank you for that question. I grew up as a kid in Nestor, and the Tijuana River Valley was my playground. So I've been experiencing the negative impacts of the transboundary sewage since I was about five years old. So to me, it's a lifetime of activity that I've been involved in. Most recently, as a member of the IBWC Citizens Forum Board, we meet several times a year with the commissioner, who's appointed by the President of the United States. So she does have significant power and influence. I was also at the recent $144 million commitment by Mexico when they signed Men in 283 to step forward and put their, at least, I think it's a fair share, towards the solution. I am of the opinion that the EPA's comprehensive solution needs a little tweaking. I am in support of wastewater reclamation, not pumping 60 million gallons of treated effluent into our local oceans.
Okay, thank you. Jen?
We've made progress with Mexico in signing agreements with the EPA and Mexico, which is basically under, and that is putting out 49 pounds of waste or sewage in our waters. It's going to take a lot more funding than that, but at least it's a step forward to make progress. And, you know, I look forward to continue our efforts with Mexico on this matter and to really ensure to keep the community up to date on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah?
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, of course, I supported the efforts to finally engage the EPA to do something. If it was up to me, it should be deemed a super fund. Like, we need $350 million more dollars to make sure this gets mitigated. And I want to push up line to the county, to the state. We need funding from all resources. We can't just run on one resource. And I think going forward, I'm going to make sure that I engage local, county, and state, and more federal funding for this, because it's just, it's not going to happen if we don't get more money in.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Hi. This is a huge problem. It's so big. We are just a small town of 27,000, and this is a bi-national issue, which has been worked on and dealt with for the past 80-plus years. I got sick swimming in the ocean. I got hepatitis swimming out near the mountain, and it was a horrible experience, and I had no idea. We have a lot of our city officials do the good fight. Our current mayor has been very vocal in drawing a lot more national attention to this problem that we have. We need to keep up that fight. We need to continue to draw interest in here. We need to form partnerships with those agencies and those people and our military in order to develop a good partnership in order to fix this problem. The communities of Chula Vista, National City, Imperial Beach, Coronado need to come together in this fight. Thank you.
Okay. I have another question. Thinking about the George Floyd incident, some members of the council proposed the idea of possibly reallocating funds from police services to other social service programs. Are there any learning points you can describe from that experience, and what, if anything, would you have done differently? Start with Cheryl.
Can you repeat that? I'm not sure I understood it.
I prefer to skip. So, all right. Thinking about the George Floyd incident, some members of the council proposed the idea of possibly reallocating funds from police services to other social service programs. Are there any learning points you can describe from that experience, and what, if anything, would you have done differently, or would you do differently?
Thank you. I don't think it's like comparing, you know, comparing it to very- I don't think it's like comparing, you know, comparing it to very different instances. I don't think we have a George Floyd incident that can happen here in Imperial Beach. I'm not for removing services from our sheriff's department. I think that a lawless state would occur, and I don't want to see us to be in Portland or Seattle or San Francisco. Our sheriffs provide the most incredible service and resources for us. To say that there aren't incidences where people hurt people, I mean, it happens all over the United States, but I don't think we should ever, ever reallocate money from our public safety to social services. I think that we are in a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna?
I'm glad whoever asked that question, because here's the thing. Our police department, our sheriff's department has implemented training. I do know that they have trained and had retraining since these incidents. The thing is, is the sheriff's department is our largest dollar ticket in our budget. And I don't think it's a matter of deep funding, reallocation, possibly, to fill our budget. But like I said earlier, I believe that we could actually add an officer or two. The fact is, is that I believe since that time, our police, our sheriff's department has done a much better job, and I think that we can do better. So, I'm going to work with our first responders and make sure that we're doing the right things going forward that we need to.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, you know, I think that what I've heard is, and I know we saw a presentation from the sheriff's department a few months back in our council meeting, and they talked about some of the things that they are doing to change how they approach it. They are the first responders, they are the ones who encounter the situations we can only, we only have nightmares about. And so, I think that they're going to be the solution. I think that as our contracts come up with the sheriff, we should have those conversations to see where they're going and see where they're headed. And if they are implementing that type of training, I agree, I don't think we should take any money away. If anything, we should add money to it. You know, earlier we talked about traffic. We do need a few more officers. They do take a large part of our budget. It is well-spent. We have low crime rates, much lower than we have in the previous decade. So, I'm grateful for the job that our sheriffs do, and I would like to have their input on how we can help come together and make changes to support all in our community.
Thank you. Mitch?
Thank you. I'm pretty sure the sheriffs have done a lot of additional training. I know there is extra resources, the PERC team, and I know they're continuing to work to have those resources available to them if they're in a situation where they need to have somebody that has a psychological background that can administer or deal with a situation that they're not prepared for. So, I do like the idea of maybe some additional budget for that, but I think that can be found in the existing five-year budget we have with the sheriff's department. I think the city team did a great job negotiating a five-year deal with minimal increases over the next five years. And so, I think as we go forward, there's certainly opportunities to look at how they're doing their business and ways to improve it. Thank you.
Alana?
Thank you for that question, and thank you for the kudos on that negotiation, the contract. That was a direct result from the work that council member Ed Spriggs and I led through the Law Enforcement Review Ad-Hoc Committee. We heard from the community, we spent almost fifteen community hours hearing all sides of the point, of what concerns community had regarding our policing. Through that, we were able to send our team, our very own Andy Hall, to negotiate a five-year contract where we capped at one percent increase for two years and three point five the second and third year for our contract. Assistant Sheriff Brown came to our council, and he even said, "Thanks to your recommendations, we're including those in the systems that we're using to address non-violent crime." PERC Team, Crisis Stabilization Unit, and other types of diversity type of training that we actually recommended through our report. Do we need more safety? Yes, we need more community service officers, especially at skate park and at the pier because we've had a series of incidences that we need more round-the-clock supervision there. Thank you.
Carol?
Well, I agree with Jack that it's money well-spent on these services that our sheriffs give us, and surely we should never, ever reduce monies that ensure our public safety. We are blessed to have such a, I think it's called, an all-star team here at our sheriff's station. They do a wonderful job for us, and they have kit gloves on now because they're afraid to go forward. And like I had someone jump my fence at my house, and I said, "I want her arrested," but they couldn't because I didn't have a no trespassing sign up. So, they are very careful, and they've been very, they're well-trained. And if we do have a rogue cop, then let's get rid of them. And/or if we have ones that aren't following protocol, let's get them retrained, but never, never reduce the funding for our, the men that give us our safety.
Jen?
I believe in community, especially in KI, by all the sheriffs. It's a huge concern, and I believe in really trusting the community to ensure accountability and transparency. We have allocated eighty million toward the budget dedicated to the sheriff's department, and I look forward to building partnerships with the community and partnerships to help fill any gaps that with our social services as well.
Okay, next question. How do you plan to address housing affordability in Imperial Beach, including rent control for mobile homes and mobile income housing? One minute. Mitch, go ahead.
Thank you for your question. I think it is a very complex issue to begin with. There's many different criteria that play into that. We have SANDAG with the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which has a quota on us. Unfortunately, I don't think there's any way this city can ever meet those quotas without creating large, high-density apartment-type complexes. I don't, I don't see an answer from more than a city today. I certainly would like to have the opportunity to talk with some of the SANDAG folks and try to understand better how we meet that quota and understand the criteria and the outcomes. I think it's going to be a tough slog, pardon the expression, but, you know, I think our city council is up to it, and as a member of the city council, I will be working on it.
Thank you. Jen?
I kind of mentioned this as one of my core issues. In twenty twenty, like, the state law was passed, it was fourteen eighty-two, a moving grant for going up, and then A C found this loophole for just cost ordinances. And so, we just need to hold or create city ordinances to hold the bad acting landlords accountable, and so that we can, so ID residents can stay in IP.
The situation that's happened at the park formerly known as Siesta Mobile Park is unacceptable. It's now called Miramar. And what it is, is you have a motorhome there, and the owner of the motorhome has to physically remove and get out of the park for one month every year. That doesn't make sense. Why on earth are we allowed to do something like that? I think we need to tighten up and look at, look at the ordinances that allow someone to do that to folks that are in their home, that they have to be asked to move one month out of here. No one else has to do that. The other part about affordable housing, it's really going to be dealing with some very economic things about the long supply and demand. If housing prices drop, then it becomes more affordable to rent. Landlords don't have to charge that much. But if you buy an apartment building for four million dollars and it has six units in there, you're going to have to charge rent enough to make some money, or at least be able to feed it to the point where you can see some economic relief from it. It's a really hard and complex problem, and I think we need to talk a lot more about it.
Thank you. Alana?
Thank you. First and foremost, we need to talk about keeping people housed. That is the most important thing. The residents of Miramar formerly known as Siesta Mobile Park were in danger of being displaced. It was bought out by a new owner. I've met with that new owner twice already. I've knocked on every single door of the mobile trailers that are in the park to figure out what were their concerns, their main concerns, and how they thought council could help them. And because of that, at my request at the last council meeting, we're going to have this brought up to council as an agenda item on September twenty-first. We're going to look at all the list of issues that they have found, which include anti-harassment provisions, this whole in and out of the park, which can totally destroy the residents there. They're some of our most vulnerable residents in our community. There's even a veteran there that has received a Purple Heart. How can we kick them out? Now, to the question about housing affordability, new development projects, we need to make sure that we incentivize developers so that they can increase the low-income to moderate-income housing units. And to the point about SANDAG, I don't think we can bury our head in the sand. Thank you.
Hannah?
Sorry, I couldn't hear. Affordable housing is not an easy subject. However, speaking about the Miramar Trailer Park, under new ownership, they apparently wanted to develop. And so, John, the director of the IB Neighborhood Center, has been working with the owners to get an agreement that they will not develop there until after the IB Neighborhood Center units, fifty units are built out. There are going to be fifty studio units, and they're going to go specifically towards seniors. Now, fifty units, it's not enough. But guess what? Where do we have real estate to build more units without building up over three stories? So, it's an ongoing issue, and I look forward to working on that when I'm on city council.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, whoops, sorry.
Turn your mic around.
Okay, thank you. Well, it is a supply and demand issue. We're, with the amount of housing, we don't have available for these people. And another problem is that when a home sells in Imperial Beach, these homes that were low-income housing homes, they're torn down, and three or four are put in its place that are million-dollar homes. So, how can anyone ever come back here and afford to live? So, SANDAG has a really high quota for us to put a lot of low-income housing here. We need to reduce that quota and have other towns, just not our town, help with taking up the slack in that, those quotas. I know a lot of people are putting ADUs in their backyard to help with this. It's just a small, a small answer, but it's just not one thing that one person can do. The whole city council has to work and develop this plan to make it happen.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, first and foremost, density is not the answer to the housing crisis or for affordable housing. You know, it's a free market, and unfortunately, there's many applying here who've had their family forced to move out into different locations, out of their homes. It's happening to everybody, and it's not specific. But I will say that we, as a city, need to make sure that every single resident in this community is treated fairly by their landlords or whoever manages their properties. It is unacceptable for anybody to live within the city walls here and be treated less than anybody else. That's an important thing for us to remember. You know, the regulations that come from Sacramento are just insane. We would like to think that we want to offer incentives to people to build, but it is nice in theory, but the actuality is, it costs too much to build anything nowadays, and so, somebody's got to make their money back. It's an unfortunate situation, but again, it's affecting everybody in this community, communities around us, and communities throughout our country.
Okay, another question. What will you do to ensure all residents have a voice in the issues that impact them? Start with Shirley.
Thank you. So, one of the things that I think would be really beneficial for our city is to have an open, open meeting day, and they can come and talk to their district official, or to the city manager, or to the mayor. And you come along, and you can have your, you know, have your issues addressed, person to person. I think that's just a great thing to do, and we could do it, you know, often, and we'll have it as a community. So, we would develop a better partnership with those that know us into office. Thank you.
Okay. Carol?
Well, I agree with Shirley. We need to have better communication amongst our residents and encourage them to get involved and even, like, after we get elected, still go to our constituents' houses, and that's their opinion, what they need. If they can't come to us, there's a lot of older geriatric people in my neighborhood, and they wouldn't be able to come to these meetings. But as you campaign, make note of these people and go to their houses and get their opinions, and other people's houses too, that, like the Spanish-speaking ones, take an interpreter with you, and get their opinions of what they need and what would help them best be a resident in the city.
Thank you. Mitch?
I'm going to go handy all unnoticed right now. I see he's in the back of the room, I'm paying attention. But I'm formally asking, I'm formally asking for the city to set aside an office so that the city council members can have standing business hours, so that folks can come in and talk to us. Not everybody does email, not everybody does Twitter, and all that other stuff. But I'd be more than happy to spend, you know, six or eight hours a week. I know I'm retired, so maybe my situation is a little bit different, but I think there should be accessibility to the district representatives, council members, the mayor. Obviously, we have to do a little bit of planning, so, but I would, I would put that forward, and I think that would help.
Thank you. Alana?
Thank you for that question. I think that what we need to do is encourage more people to come to City Hall, and the way to do that is to break down language barriers. Again, I've been knocking on a lot of doors, and there's a lot of English-as-a-second-language residents that have never been part of the process because they've never been engaged. Tagalog-speaking families as well. I think that we're far behind all the regional agencies in other cities that already offer simultaneous translation for our council meetings. I think we should start with that. I also think that we need to close the digital divide with our seniors. During COVID, a lot of our seniors weren't accessing testing or vaccinations because they didn't know how to use a computer. So, we advocated for regular phone calls. We need to get back to that so that we can reach all of our community members. And finally, I think that there's a huge missed opportunity for working with our local schools. We need to bring them, once a month, whatever it is, day at City Hall, and engage them into the governance process so that they could better understand what the future holds for them. Thank you.
Hannah?
Thank you. I'm already making a list and checking it twice. As I go house to house, I'm making notes with everyone I talk to. What are your main concerns? What are the issues you have in your specific community, your specific neighborhood in our district? And I am a transparent person. I have an email, I have a website, and I have a phone number, and I absolutely have your ear, because I'll be working for you. This isn't about me. This is me working for you.
Okay. Jen?
I too have been walking and knocking on everyone's door, finding out what your issues are. Your voice is very important, I want to hear your voice. So, whatever your concerns are, definitely I go to city council and to the city. And so, that's why I just walk in and knocking and talking to people and getting to know them. I am also transparent. I leave my flyer, as well as my business card, where you can contact me, my website, that's my contact information, where you can talk, you can call me, or email me as well. So, I'm very transparent.
Jen?
Yeah, you know, first and foremost, the elected officials in any city are servants for the community. At any given time, you should be able to contact them, and you should expect that they contact you back, that they listen to you. If they don't, I would suggest you make a mental note that you don't vote for those types of people. We need a community that is driven by the voice of the people. Community hours is always good, the hard part is making sure that we get that notice of outreach to the people. It's really difficult. But, you know, one of the keys that anybody on this stage can tell you is that we've all been knocking on doors, and it's the most effective way. The problem with elections is, after elections, nobody keeps knocking on doors, and I think that we need to have that. I know that... I know that Danny Hall really wants to make sure that we get the coffee with the city manager, because the great thing about a city manager is, he'll, he'll be able to have somebody tell him stuff that they probably wouldn't tell us. And so that type of openness is great. Again, just honesty, transparency, and having open door policies is, is the key for this. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, another question. Can you share your suggestions to reduce crime and improve public safety in the community? Start with Malama.
Yeah, again, I think that we need to invest in our youth, in our teens. I've talked to so many people that tell me that teens don't have activities to do, and that's how they get into trouble. Uh, we've had an incident at Skate Park that is absolutely unacceptable. We need to make sure that we create more programs for teens. There's been some amazing ideas, like let's do a roller rink with, uh, concession services where kids can go and hang out. That's number one. Number two, I mentioned it before, we need to increase our park rangers and our community service officers. Uh, we have the money to do that. We already passed Measure I. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll, I don't know if we're gonna talk about it, the TOT will bring in more additional funding. We need to make sure that we provide safety at the places where our kids go to play and the places where our visitors go to recreate, such as the pier. The pier has had some issues with, with fishing and this and that. We need to make sure that we have someone, someone present who can keep the peace and make sure that we, um, you know, don't have increased crime. For one reason, we are the safest coastal city in the county. We wanna make sure that we continue to be that. Thank you.
Thanks. Jen?
Yeah, you know, it's, uh, again, crime's not a fun thing to talk about. Luckily enough, in our community, we, uh, we talk about bicycles getting stolen, the occasional catalytic converter. And while those are significant to the individual, to a community, it's pretty small. We have a very low homicide rate. Our aggravated assault and those types of instances, again, are very low. Um, so i- it's not that we have a huge amount of crime. Most of these crimes that we get reported are crimes of opportunity. Somebody left their mic on the side of their house, a lot. And again, it's unexcusable to have those types of things. Uh, as far as public safety, you know, strong neighborhoods are good neighborhoods. Good neighborhoods create a strong city and a strong community. So get out there, know your neighbors, have those types of things, have a block party. Those are the coolest things. So having people together really creates a neighborhood. And again, people know which neighborhoods are strong, which ones are looking out for their neighbors when they're on vacation or otherwise. So, thank you.
Um, Jen?
Thank you for safety. I agree with Jen, Malama, that, you know, you have to be involved in the community and you talk to your neighbors. Communication is key. Um, continue working with deputies and sheriffs to maintain safety as well as, um, communication with your, with your kids as well. You know, being involved as a parent, talking to them, making sure that they stay out of trouble.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, I think one of the biggest crimes right now is catalytic converters being stolen in cars. And so maybe make, uh, make it punishable, um, with, for having all these converter, uh, catalytic converter thefts. If you can't prove that it's yours, then you make, make a law to, we have to prosecute these people. Um, and another good thing to do is bring back community, um, neighborhood watch programs. For people, um, let people be the eyes and ears for our sheriffs to call it in, because right now, they're kind of spread thin. There's not enough sheriffs that are actually working. There's a mandatory, um, overtime, um, for all these guys to take a, um, slack where they don't have any sheriffs to work. And so with the neighborhood watches, um, have people more proactive in our neighborhoods. And also, um, maybe, um, get another patrol at night to help these thefts from happening. Uh, I know someone personally that had a truck stolen, Brennan truck stolen. Three weeks later, he has catalytic converters stolen, so we need to do better.
Thank you. All right, Cheryl?
Thank you. Um, Councilman Turek's had a great, great idea about lighting Imperial Beach. We need to create more visibility on all of our streets in order to see what kind of activity is happening. If anyone belongs to that, uh, app called Neighborhood, there's also the ability to record what's going on in front of your street. When someone had, um, created a crime in my house, the sheriff knocked at my door and said, "Did my green camera pick it up?" And when he looked at the footage, we could all be taking more advantage of those types of, um, those types of programs and apps that are out there and keep up our own security, light up our property, and let's get behind, get in our community lit. Palm Avenue, Seacoast Drive, Imperial Beach Boulevard. If we light it up, it's gonna be more difficult for someone to be committing a crime and getting away with it.
Thank you. Mitch?
Yes, I, I, I have to agree with Jen. I think a lot of these crimes that we hear about, we, we see them on Facebook, are crimes of opportunity. Um, so I, I think some of it might be on us to be better citizens and, uh, take better care of our items, um, specifically bikes. Uh, I've been working with Lieutenant Marquez, um, and I can't provide all the details, but, um, I think they're pretty close to prosecuting two, two gentlemen here in town that have been, uh, part of a, a pretty complex bike, stole a bike ring. And, uh, so I, I certainly, uh, understand the sheriffs are doing their part. I just think, uh, maybe we just need to be a little more diligent on our part, uh, with these types of crimes. Um, as far as, uh, other suggestions, I agree with, uh, the lighting. Um, Imperial Beach, uh, I think needs an upgrade in, in the lighting. In certain areas of town, it's very dark at night. Certainly not, uh, doesn't promote, uh, visitors walking to and from venues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hannah?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think we could, you know, just visiting with, uh, and interviewing with the deputy sheriff association on Thursday. They did affirm that in fact, we have the lowest crime rate, uh, here in Imperial Beach of, um, all the beach cities in San Diego County. However, blunt crime is too many. So, uh, we need to work. Um, I agree with those that spoke about beefing up neighborhood, uh, watch programs. Um, I agree that we need to look for money to get, uh, extra community officers in. And, um, we need to educate our community and say, you know, don't leave, don't leave things outside, you know, don't make it accessible. So, uh, I think there's a lot we can do going forward, but I intend to do that on city council.
Okay, that, um, completes the time we have for questions. Wow, we have a lot of topics here. Really appreciate all your questions from the audience. Uh, before we start the closing statements, I just wanna remind you that you need to register your vote. And the league has a website called Voters Edge, which, um, is, provides you information about your ballot. You put in your address and you get your ballot, background information, funding information, that sort of thing. So take a look at that. And you've done a great job of organizing this gig, big forum. It's certainly a great way to get more people involved in, in government. Um, the closing statements are going to be in reverse, um, of, of the opening statements. So we are gonna start with Jen. Two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Jen Cravley again, honored to run for IB City Council District One. IB is a very special place. We need to keep the momentum, put the hard work in, and trust the issues at hand. I'll work hard to serve my community and council with integrity and respect. IB needs more parks than D1, more pedestrian-friendly streets, and better lighting to make, and to make housing affordable for all. We need to make sure IB has resources it needs to flourish socially and economically. What's happening in my city is what's going, is, you know, I'm gonna go out there and start listening to my community. And I will echo your concerns, and I will understand what they are and make sure that people understand this, because it's very important. I definitely wanna be the voice for you. Um, it's not about only passing good policies. The members of the city council have a powerful influence, and I'm a servant of the heart. And so I love my community. I wanna be a voice for it. So I'm asking for your vote. Please vote for Jen Cravley for City Council District One.
All right, Jen, will you stand up, please, and let's give Jen the hand. Next is Jen.
We're getting towards the end of this program. I'm gonna get this for everybody standing here. Uh, so, you know, I've not raised tens of thousands of dollars, and I've not looked for political endorsements for people or parties outside the city. It's not about big fancy banners. It's not about shiny flyers that hopefully, uh, people will recognize. It's all about community. It always has been, it always will be. As I've gone out, I haven't taken a list with me that, that identify who's this party or that party or no party. I now have every single door. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. I'm not driven by political ideology. I don't think that our small city needs it. We all, we work hard. I will continue to work hard for this city, for these residents, for all of you. New, old, um, lived for a long time, now lived for more than a couple months. I will advocate for Imperial Beach always. I am Jack Fisher, from IB and for IB. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Stand up, please. All right, next is... Oh, Shirley.
I just wanna thank all of you. You gave up two hours of your lives to listen to us because you wanted to know what's there. I wanna thank all the folks that are at these tables here because you have no idea how hard it is to be here and, um, to run. And we're doing it out of love for the community. I love this town. I love IB. And I've always said that this is where I'm gonna be all the days of my life. I have no aspirations other than to serve you, as I have for the last 60 years. Um, I have over 30 years of appointed governmental experience, and, um, I know I'm gonna be doing a really good job. All I'm asking is that, um, you listeners, let, and do understand that we need new leaders to fulfill our promise to our children for a safer and cleaner town. This is our dream. This is our opportunity, and this could be our destiny. The future of our city depends on leaders who do what they say they're going to do. I'm calling on you to be on this journey with me. Vote for me for your new mayor. I'm surely not for Wadisayi.
Thank you. Shirley, stand up.
Thank you. I once again wanna thank the people of IB for giving me the opportunity to serve you these last four years as a councilperson and for the opportunity to serve as your next mayor. I know we're talking about change, but we've made tremendous progress these last eight years with Mayor DeDina. We are the safest coastal city in the county. We now have a Parks and Rec department, which we didn't have before for the last 20 years. We need to make sure that we continue to expand those programs for our youth, for our teens, for our seniors. We need to make sure that we address the housing crunch that so many in this community are suffering. Over 70% of our residents are renters, and they're feeling that pain. We need to make sure that we continue to pave our alleyways. I've been walking the entire city. There's so many unpaid valleys in our city still. We need to make sure that we increase lighting so that our families, when they come late at home from their car dates work, they don't go into their house without lighting and they don't feel unsafe. I absolutely wanna continue to fight the sewage crisis. That's why I've dedicated 17 years of my life as an environmental activist, as a part of a nonprofit, now in council, and next as Utramater. I wanna make sure that my vision is that one day we'll have clean water for everybody to enjoy. I also wanna stand up for IB's workers. You know, some folks talk about outside interests. They're not outside interests. They're unions. Unions that protect workers' rights and represent 2,234 active and retired union members, residents and voters of Imperial Beach. That's why they're backing me, because they know that I'm gonna stand up and fight for them. As mayor, I will make sure that our economic growth is done sustainably and that it is in line with, makes IB IB. Not OB, not PV, not PONTO, but IB. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady enthusiasm. Carol?
Well, I'm just a neighbor with a big heart and a lot of concern for Imperial Beach. I'm here to stand up, to show up, stand up and speak up for my community. Um, it's been very hard and very difficult, but I'm here because I love this town. This town has my entire heart and holds all my family memories here, and I wanna keep that. I wanna make other families have their children have the best memories of their life like I did. Um, so I think we've gotta continue to improve the public safety, um, with the deputies, firefighters, paramedics, and lifeguards. Um, well-managed growth to benefit residents and not outside interests. Encourage business growth that provide choices, jobs, and tax revenues. And have more public input and, um, transparency, um, for all of us. And, um, I just wanna thank you for giving me this time because I'm just a grassroots program. My first signs were hand-painted. My, um, flyers were from my own printer. Because I'm here. I'm here for Imperial Beach. Even though I might not be the most polished, um, and more common, I'm here with a big heart and ready to work for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol? Mitch, next.
Thank you. My name is Mitch McKay. I am running for District Three City Council. Um, I've lived in Imperial Beach, uh, for over the last, gosh, 38 years now. It seems like forever in the South Bay, like I said, since 1964. Uh, I grew up here. I know the history of this town. I know the people of this town, and I think they know me. And I've been involved and civically engaged from day one, and I wanna continue that. I wanna step it up to the city council level. Uh, I retired three years ago as a, as a, as an aerospace engineer. I've got a few good brain cells left. Um, I, I think I can put them to use, and I think I can, uh, I can help, uh, make Imperial Beach a better place. I'm not a politician like Carol. I'm a problem solver. That was my job for 40 years in engineering. Um, so, uh, while I may take a different tact at things, uh, and my brain may work a little differently, I think we can all collaboratively work together and find solutions to some of these really challenging issues. Uh, I think we need to continue to promote and, and, uh, back our law enforcement. And we need to, you know, allocate resources as necessary, but not back away from that. Uh, I, I think, um, one, one of the things that I'm concerned about is outside influence and outside money. Uh, I would like to look towards, uh, instituting an ordinance in the city, much like that of PONTO, which limits the amount of money a single individual can give to a single candidate. Um, currently, the state's, uh, limit is $4,900. Uh, I would like to see it much less than that, um, like $500 or $1,000. So that's something I'll be looking at. Also, um, I'm very fiduciary-minded. Uh, like I said, I manage $100 million contracts, and, and I would be, uh, remiss if I didn't perform that same fiduciary responsibility with the city's books and make sure that, uh, we're getting the best bang for our buck. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
You know, there's one more thing I wanted to tell you. You may have noticed this, uh, evening has been filmed, and it'll be on the League Women Voters of San Diego website under events. So give it a couple days, and, and you can look for it and share it with your friends.
You do.
Um, okay, down to Emma.
Last but not least.
Last but not least.
Uh, thank you so much, um, again, to the League Women Voters, the IB Chamber. And I want to thank experts, uh, councilmembers, experts for your service for the last 12 years, the last 30 years. Being a servant of District Three very fair and responsibly for, for this, these last years. And I'm wanting to take that torch and maintain the progress that's been made here in District Three. We're the gem, a gem of the city. The whole city is beautiful in its different ways, but, but District Three is the most affected by climate change, cross-border pollution. It's also the most visited spot in IB, especially on weekends and in the summer. So, uh, we need strong leadership to continue to, uh, make responsible decisions in District Three. So I could talk more and more about myself, but you know what? I'm gonna talk about you because I wanna hear what you want from me.
I want to talk about you because I want to hear what you want from me because I won't, this won't be my job. This will be my job working for you. So I really look forward, if I haven't knocked on the door yet, I look forward to talking to you, and I want to hear what your concerns and issues are. We can work together and roll our sleeves up and get things done. Thank you so much. I'm Anna Webb. I'm running for City Council District Three, Imperial Beach.
Thank you so much for coming and drive home safely. Thank you.